Good afternoon. Good evening. I'd like to call the Dublin City Council meeting order. Uh, now I know we got a bunch of bad news that year, but y'all feel free to come on down in front of me. But, uh, we're going to have Captain Davis and he would give us our indication and we'll say please and flag. Y'all would please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, your heavenly Father, Almighty and gracious God, thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here at Dublin High School fortuitum to continue to take our city council meetings to the community, to God. We ask that you bless the entire Dublin city school system from administrators, staff all the way down to the students and employees. Lord, we ask that you camp angels around us and protect us from any threat on the name. Lord, we ask that you bless us, the city council, that we will make just and righteous decisions. And Lord, we ask you continue to lead us and direct us in ways that have us to go. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Lord and to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united, and united in the spirit of justice. I'd like to thank you all for coming. Uh, can y'all hear me okay in the background?
Yeah.
Okay, did you hear? Uh, first item on the agenda is approval of the August tweeting to, uh, 2020 and September 2nd, 2020 special call city council meeting. You got a copy of those in front of you.
Let's go through them.
Got a motion and a second in discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, can, uh, can Clark here? Uh, Taylor, who's doing one question in the second?
Okay. Out of number two, approval of bills over three thousand dollars. You got a copy of those in place.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Got a motion and a second in discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Out of number three, approval of purchases over three thousand dollars.
Crowd said we have no purchases over three thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you, sir. Out of number four, presentation about the Dublin Lawrence Race Relations Task Force. Uh, I think Reverend Welber, you go and address counsel. Thank you, sir. And before you get started, we'd just like to thank you and your group for the time these folks have met every Thursday, or most every Thursday for how many weeks, man?
A lot of them.
And, uh, I hope this is just the first of, uh, many things we will be covering with this. Go ahead.
All right. Can it, can everybody hear me okay?
No.
No?
Louder.
Louder. Lord have mercy. I don't, might check this thing working? It's not working? All right. All right, uh, uh, good afternoon. I do come on behalf of the entire Race Relations Task Force Committee. Um, we are comprised of eighteen, uh, sixteen.
Right back, sixteen, eighteen, I remember.
We are comprised of eighteen members, uh, nine African-American, uh, community members and nine white community members. Um, and so I've been elected, uh, chosen as the chairman and the speaker on behalf of the Race Relations Task Force Committee tonight. So I don't come representing myself, but rather the interest of everyone on the committee. To the mayor, city council, county commissioner, citizens of Dublin and Lawrence, we are a volunteer Race Relations Task Force comprised of nine blacks and nine white members of the community. We were asked to participate in discussions to better understand the intricate differences between us, the racial differences that could both unite and divide us in ways to move toward a racially unified future. Our purpose is to work together towards a racially unified community. Our mission is twofold. One, to openly and honestly discuss topics that need to be addressed pertaining to racial disparity, insensitivity, inequality, as well as identify areas of systematic racism in our community in order to offer recommendations and leadership in various areas of concern. Number two, to communicate to our respective communities the truths we discovered that lead to healing of our racial misperceptions and misunderstandings of each other. Our objective is to be a racially unified community that all others want to model. Our discussions so far have been on the topic of racial education, disparity, racial economic disparity, and the Confederate monument. Both sides are actively seeking to identify the truths as well as the untruths that inform our opinions. We're looking forward to future discussions which will include further exploration of racial disparities such as health and employment, the differences in culture that inform or exacerbate racial tensions, and other racial differences that are specific to our community. We are trying to uncover what is true and what is untrue about many of the divisive issues that are facing our country right now in our community. There are tough questions that seek real answers through open and honest dialogue. We don't expect to walk out agreeing with each other, but we do hope to walk out understanding each other. One of the most divisive issues we're discussing is the Confederate monument in beautiful downtown Dublin. We have all seen the recent civil unrest in our nation that has stemmed from the deaths of African-American individuals in our country. There are many different perspectives from which to view these events. We are not here to make judgments. We're not here to provide directions on these situations, but to listen to each other and determine what's mutually respectful way, what's a mutually respectful way forward, even in spite of opposing views. We are not tasked with making a decision on the future of the monument. We are tasked with discussing ways to have racially unified future for our community. All sides and viewpoints are valid. There is no correct answer in regards to the monument that will make everyone in our community happy. So compromise must happen from both sides if peace and unity is really our goal. It is important to note that many of the task force would prefer that the monument be removed with no plan to relocate. Conversely, many in our community feel it should not be touched at all. We do understand both sides of the argument. Therefore, each of our discussions and some debates, as task force attendees presented, were pulled and the scope of the ideas of the Confederate monument were narrowed down to the following. Our committee has decided to, number one, come down to two options, one and two. Number one is to repurpose the monument. For the historical and educational purposes, by placing the monument at the Dublin Lawrence Museum near the Confederate graves at Norton Cemetery on private property, or return the monument to the hands of the United Daughters of the Confederacy or the sons of the Confederate veterans for preservation and placement on private property. Twelve of our community members supported this idea. The second option, to redefine, redesign, and reimagine the park around the monument at its current location to communicate an inclusive, educational, tolerant message of racial unity. Six of our members supported this idea. One member abstained. We support the idea of using our collective voice with legislators and working to change the state law that allows communities rights to determine what's best for their community in regards to all monuments. One of the things that we can agree on, if everyone in our community can rally around, there are certain things that we all can rally around. Educating our kids. Every person, black and white, wants to see the best for their children. Every person, whether black or white, wants to live in a safe community. Every person, whether black or white, wants the best for African-Americans and Caucasian-Americans. As a community and as a board, as a race relations task force, we all agree that even though we don't have the right access, we all agree that we are stronger today. We don't know what may come of this recommendation from our committee, but it is respectfully submitted this day, September twenty, s- s- respectfully submitted this day, September the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. That's the end of our report. At this time, I'll ask if any of my committee members would like to add anything. Are there any questions?
Now, if you have any questions. Again, we want to thank y'all for working done, and we hope that this is not the only recommendation you will be writing back to council. So, thank you.
Absolutely. There are many topics that we're discussing. Uh, we pushed this into the forefront because it was, uh, appeared to be the most pressing issue, but however, we have a lot more work to do to understand each other. As a, as a community and as a committee, we have pledged ourselves to, to do that work. And so we do look forward to presenting a lot more, uh, questions and, and opinions and maybe insights from both sides of the table. Yes, sir.
Reverend Ron.
Counselman Davis. I apologize.
Reverend Ron, with a copy of the recommendation be handed over to the council.
Yes. Now, who do I hand it over to?
You do. Clans. All right, thanks again. We appreciate y'all's hard work and look forward to hearing from you again. Thank you. Uh, if you don't mind, with the members of the committee, mine standing where, uh, council can give us an idea of who you are and where you are. Thank y'all all for working through this.
Badcock Home Furniture and More is your home store, where you'll find great savings on new living room sets, sofas, love seats, recliners, and more. Badcock Home Furniture and More has great savings every day on bedding and bedroom sets. Shop Badcock Home Furniture and More for a great selection of dining room sets and save every day on electronics and appliances. At Badcock Home Furniture and More, nineteen twenty-seven Highway four forty-one South in Dublin. Call two seven five three one four four for more information. Or stop I N C Wendy and Tim Sumner or any of their friendly staff today at Badcock and More Home Furniture Store, where no credit is ever refused. Georgia Dermatology and Skin Cancer Center has been serving Georgia since nineteen ninety-six. Dr. Michael Sharkey, Dr. Mark Bonner, along with P A's Tony Lynn Herring, Alan Manning, and Kelly Toler have helped patients with most skincare cancer surgery, routine skin exams, and general and surgical dermatology. So come see the professionals at Georgia Dermatology and Skincare Cancer Center located in Aaron Office Park in Dublin. Call for an appointment today at two seven five seven five four six.
Okay, uh, out of number five, a discussion and interaction on resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a grant and loan documents and agreements for the two thousand nineteen CHIA grant program. Is that, uh, Mr. Powell or Mr. Jones?
Uh, I can read the resolution, ma'am. Um, resolution number twenty dash twenty-one, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve and authorize the execution and delivery of certain grant and loan documents for the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Community Home Investment Program, or CHIA, uh, Home and Rehabilitation Assistance Loan. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute certain documents to carry out the purposes of the grant program to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay. Uh, councilor, you've heard staff reading the, uh, resolution. Is it, uh, here a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
We got a motion and a second in discussion. Let's see if you get that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, out of number six, a discussion and interaction on a resolution establishing rules and procedures for citizens' comments.
Um, Ms. Barrett, this is resolution number twenty dash twenty-two, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to establish procedures and rules for citizens to address mayor and council, the council meeting, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay. You're discussing there, got here a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Here. Got a motion and a second in discussion.
Second.
Here, done all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Out of number seven, a discussion and interaction on a resolution to transfer certain properties to the Dublin Lawrence Landback Authority.
It's resolution number twenty dash twenty-three, a resolution of mayor and council of the city of Dublin authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed of certain properties to the Dublin Lawrence Landback Authority to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Those, and I'll just say those, uh, parcels, uh, Mr. Mayor, four twelve Holm Street, tax parcel number D fifteen F two sixty-five, two oh seven East Mary Street, tax parcel D fifteen F three twenty-seven, and nine ten North Franklin Street, tax parcel number D fifteen E ninety-one.
Yes. Uh, you've heard the resolution, uh, here a motion to approve.
So, Mr.?
Got a motion and second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second in discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to citizens' comments for the eight citizens that would like to address council tonight. Please come up and let me, let me say part of our procedure that we were a little confused on last time. Each speaker has five minutes to speak. If there is two groups of people here of opposing, uh, opinions, then we ask that y'all pick at least two people to speak and the other group of people, two people if that's the case. And I'll put it here where you can see it.
If you don't mind, I'm going to take the mask off because it muffles my voice.
Absolutely.
Oxford Redworks Online defines cultural genocide as the systematic destruction of a cultural or existential indicia. The Urban Dictionary defines it as a term used to describe the deliberate destruction of the cultural heritage of a people or a nation for the political, military, religious, ideological, ethical, or racial reasons. David Merzessian of Massachusetts Baptist College says, "Elements of cultural genocide are manifested when artistic, literary, and cultural activities are restricted or outlawed, or when national treasures, libraries, archives, museums, artifacts, and art galleries are destroyed or confiscated." Southerners are recognized within academia as a separate and distinct ethnic group and a distinct cultural group, and yet we're increasingly denied the right to honor our heroes and our kids and kin as demands are made to wipe out any vestiges of our heritage. This is cultural genocide, reference my opening definitions. Every other ethnic and cultural group in the United States is encouraged to express pride in their heritage, except southerners, who are told expressions of pride in their heritage is racist, and that itself is blatantly racist and discriminatory towards southerners. Confederate monuments service tombstones for those brave Confederate dead who didn't make it home. His remains laid unidentified on some battlefield are dumped in a mass grave or buried in an unmarked grave in some Yankee prison camp. Their grieving families had nothing to bury, no tombstone to visit. The Dublin monument, which you now want to destroy, repurpose, or move, was dedicated on April twenty-sixth, nineteen twelve, as a public cemetery, a public tombstone. And now, after a hundred and eight years, we're told as part of the cultural cleansing of the South, our honor, our memorial to our dead, must come down because it represents slavery and is designed divisive. I call bull on both accounts. That monument is a tribute to the soldiers who fought to defend their homeland from Yankee invasion. Nowhere on it is slavery mentioned. As for divisiveness, after Reconstruction's dark days, there was a gentleman's agreement between North and South, the differences of opinion over the causes of Lincoln's War aside, all could agree on the valor and the honor of those who fought on both sides to promote healing and unity. Now that the North and its minions in the South, carpetbaggers and scalawags alike, have no gentleman among their ranks, that agreement has been brought up time and time again across the South, generating the very divisiveness the genocidal attackers claim to be preventing. As southerners, we're by nature a very polite people. It's their very politeness that led Yankees, carpetbaggers, and scalawags to think they can won't roughshod over us and we won't fight back. And sadly, we have through our inaction, through our blind assumptions that the aforementioned gentleman's agreement would be honored in perpetuity, allowed too many slights to our history and heritage to go unanswered. Enough is enough. We demand that the gentleman's agreement made by our ancestors be honored and that we be allowed to celebrate our heritage just like every other ethnic and cultural group in the United States. Leave our Confederate memorial alone. Let us honor our dead. Stop the cultural genocide of the South.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, I'm Tasha Rowland, and everyone here at the Cloverleaf Restaurant would like to invite you to come try our country-style all-you-can-eat buffet. We hold ourselves to the highest standards of safety and quality in the food we prepare for you. We clean our facilities constantly and we offer curbside service. Just call four seven eight two seven five twenty eighty, and we will have your order ready right away. And Friday is our seafood day. You deserve a great meal. Cloverleaf caters. Call us for your next gathering or event. So treat yourself to the Cloverleaf Restaurant and make sure you're satisfied. We open Sunday through Fridays, eleven to two, with plenty of dining, or we can get it ready to go for you.
I'm Glenn Redster with Hometown Supply. We want to remind you that through these tough times, that we are here for you. We stand ready to assist you with whatever you may need, from appliances to hardware, from lawn and garden supplies, to tires and batteries, we are here for you. Come into Hometown Supply and let us help you today, or call us at two seven two zero three four five. We can help you select whatever meets your needs, and we will deliver it right to your home or office. We offer in-house financing to fit your budget. This is our community, you are our neighbors, and we're in this together. Just remember, you can't do business at Hometown Supply, you just can't do it.
Anyone else that'd like to address council? Yes, sir. You would state your name.
My name's Adam Poet. I make copies of what I'm gonna say, and then I'll show it later. There's gonna be type O's, I guarantee you, because I'm tied up right after work. The monument in downtown Dublin is a memorial of Confederate soldiers from Lawrence County. It is not a monument of Confederate government or its ideals. Proof of this is inscribed within the monument itself, in memoriam of our heroes, eighteen sixty-one to eighteen sixty-five. This monument was purchased by the children and grandchildren of Confederate soldiers. Many of these soldiers were buried on distant battlefields, leaving their families no gravesite to visit. This was the case with my ancestor, Gussie Seth Johnson, who died in Richmond, Virginia, and was buried there. This memorial was placed here to give families like mine a physical location to honor and grieve their loved ones. Three conscription acts was passed by Confederate government. All white men aged seventeen to fifty were required by law to serve the Confederate military. They had no choice in the matter. There was a loophole in the law that allowed the rich to buy their way out of service. The poor had no choice in their destiny. They had no more choice than to slave. They had to go. It is interesting to note that not just white men are represented in this monument. Many free blacks chose to fight for the Confederacy. The Confederate Army paid black soldiers equal to white soldiers. The Union paid black soldiers half the pay of the white counterparts. Bill Yopp, a free black man from Lawrence County, volunteered to be a drummer in the Confederate Army. His descendants still live here in Dublin. What's been asked of the Southern, Dublin City Council is illegal. In nineteen fifty-eight, U S eighty-five dash four twenty-five, section fourteen, was passed into law. As federal law, it recognizes Confederate veterans, for instance, as U S veterans. They get exact same treatment as a U S veteran, based by federal law. So, when you ask, remember they're U S veterans too, by federal law. More recently, Senate Bill seventy-seven was passed in Georgia. I'd be familiar with that. The bill prohibits local governments from moving Confederate murals to any place of less prominence. The bill expressly prohibits a monument's relocation to a cemetery. I propose that laying beneath the monument, ten foot by ten foot square, be surveyed and deeded jointly to the daughters of the Confederacy and the sons of the Confederacy. This will forevermore relieve the city of any obligation related to the monument. It'll also place the monument and its fate in the hands of the direct descendants of the soldiers. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Remember this, council. Okay, does anyone else that'd like to address council? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. You would state your name and, uh, remember if you come in in five minutes.
My name is Robert Hightower. I'm here today based upon the, the image of Dublin. I've been in the business in Dublin for nineteen years, and I noticed there's a different side of town that gets more treatment than the others, when we're talking about image, landscaping, facilities. Had experience. When the sanitation department came by a couple yards in front of my business and scapped it to the ground. I addressed the city manager on this. As of today, I've yet heard from him about the situation. This is a problem of Dublin what we have called systemic, systemic image on our community. One side of town looks better than the other town. You go on Beverly, it's carved out, edged up, shaped up. You go on North Jefferson, grass growing everywhere. Ask the city to do more on the side, on the poverty side of town, just as they do on the side of town that they consider the quote-unquote, the untouchable. Please do something about the image of Dublin. This is not only for me, this is for you, those who represent the city of Dublin, to change the perception what Dublin really can be, and not let it be what other towns can turn out to be, by changing the image of the city. Just the image, the sidewalk, it's just simple. Edge it up, carve it up, and change the image of Dublin. And start with that. Doesn't cost very much to do that. But if we don't change the image of Dublin, when people come into our town, they can tell what side of town is the other, and that's sad. That's sad. I have people come to ask me to help them, campaign for them. I ask you, do something about this. Don't continue to ride by and see overgrown grass into your communities, and then when you go another side of the community, you get to see nice things carved up, edged up, same taxpayer money pays the same side of town as the other. Ask the city to do more about the town that they say that they care for. Thank you.
At Morris Bank, we understand that your personal finances and banking experiences can be stressful. We also know that it doesn't have to be that way. That's why for over sixty years, we've dedicated ourselves to providing common sense banking to people just like you. We work hard to combine the latest online mobile technology and top-notch customer service that allows us to do just that.
We realize our customers have choices, but what sets us apart is the personal service that we provide that they may not receive at larger institutions. We like to make you feel at home, and we like to make the process as easy as possible when you're banking with us.
But we're not focused on helping just our customers. We are equally dedicated to supporting the community we are a part of. Just this year alone, we've logged thousands of community service hours and provided significant financial support to the communities we serve. We want to make sure you have the best banking experience possible. Come see us or give us a call to find out what makes Morris Bank different, because we're banking on you.
All right, anyone else that'd like to address council? Yes, sir. Get my ear. We all know you, but if you would state your name.
Yes, sir, ma'am. I'm Roy Saul. Um, I'm, uh, spearheading the, um, twenty twenty census, and, um, typically to let you know who she is. But however, uh, we're just taking this opportunity to, um, uh, since September the thirtieth is the last day for the, um, twenty twenty census, for anybody to make a difference for Dublin Lawrence County, Georgia, and for that state of Georgia as well. So we, uh, we had a meeting, a go-to meeting yesterday. Uh, you know, we talked about some things that we want to try to help get done to go into the communities. As you know, that everybody knows it's a pandemic going on, and a lot of things are are put at, at a halt. But at the same time, we are- But at the same time, we are taking extra precautionary measures to talk to people because we know that this got to be done. And also on that, I want to thank Ms. Councilman Jones and Brenda Chang for heading up the food drive, because that's allowing me to reach out to a whole lot of people. I think on top of that, I think we probably did about 40, actually about 30 families and probably about 200 people came out of that that got registered through that effort. So that was a great method of reaching out to the people. Now we on the final stage of the census. We started this time last year with Heath Taylor, the chamber president. We solicited help. We reached out with educating and promoting, and I just want to make this, this is not our final, hopefully this is our final meeting for the, I think, for this council meeting, but we are still going to go on and on and on until the end. We're going to finish with a strong ending. But right now, again, there will be a mail-out of the update tomorrow, but as far as of yesterday, it's only 56.10 people that have filled out the census. And we got 40% of the people that have not done it. So in order to be counted, to have that money to come into this community, we really need it. In 2010, it was like $16,000 per, $16,000 per person that the federal government allowed funding to go into Georgia. So you multiply 16,000 times state of Georgia, and they send that money to Georgia, and Georgia in the essence send that money down to Dublin, Lawrence County. I also talked with Michelle Neesmith, she's with the ACCG, Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and they're going with this final thing called Final Push. And they have a calendar of events that we're going to be going with the media to help this process out. So we begin with Brooke as well for the city of Dublin to put it on our Facebook page as well. I'm not going to take up too much time on Ms. Tiffany to come up and do something on behalf of what she's doing from the Georgia Municipal Association. So again, we talked about the county side of it, now we're going to talk about the Georgia Municipal Association instead. And also, before I do step down, I have talked with some of the local grocery stores. Crowberg did commit and said that we can put signs like this up around town. The other thing the manager said that we don't want nobody conjugating outside. He said you put a sign up, maybe one person to stand up and say something, but don't stop it. So we will be doing that in the community. Ms. Tiffany.
I'm Tiffany Stanley, member services consultant with Georgia Municipal Association. And as Roy stated, the timing of the issuance, we are at the finish line for completing the census, and we are at a very critical point. Georgia's overall response rate is not good at all, and ACCG and GMA recognizes that. And...
One minute.
Let me hurry up there. But anyway, Georgia's at risk of losing $75 million in federal funding. And so GMA is doing a 10-10-10 initiative, 10 days left for 10 minutes for the next 10 years. And so we're encouraging our elected officials to please encourage the citizens to complete the census. They can complete it online, call in on telephone, but we've got to do whatever we can do in order to make sure everyone is counted. As you know, CARES Act funds was based off of population. So all municipalities in the state of Georgia received CARES Act funding, and it was based off of population. So if your population is undercounted, then the money that you have coming to your community is going to be undercounted. And so we do not want that, and from GMA perspective, you'll be receiving some information from me pretty much every day. I've worked with Peyton to do a social media campaign as well, just to keep that the census completion by September 30th in the forefront of everyone's mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, if anyone else would like to address council?
My name is Robbie Smith Alamo, and I was sitting there and I wasn't going to say anything because Ryan, our committee chair, has done an awesome job of talking with you about the issues that we have been discussing in the race relations task force. So I'm not going to repeat that, but I do want to say I am the oldest person who is on this committee. I was born and reared in Lawrence County, and it's kind of sad to say that I lived away for years and years and came back home because I wanted to come back to Lawrence County where I have six siblings, and we are a close-knit family, so I'm happy to be back in this county. I, and I won't tell you how old I am, but I'm pretty old. And I was the first, I think, black person to work at the Morris State Bank. And that's why I still call it, because when I worked there, it was Morris State Bank. And you might say I was what was called a token black. I was the only person in the bank, except maybe the janitor, I don't remember, but I was the lowest-paid person in the bank and the most highly educated person in the bank. So as we look at what we're doing now, I'm very proud that the mayor and city council has taken this role to look at the inequalities, the systemic inequalities that exist, and you want to do something about it. Because I know that we want to move Dublin forward. Dublin is a wonderful place to live, and we want to make it a better place to live. We don't want to be at the tail end in Georgia because we are trying to hold on to things that it's time for us to let go of and move on. And look at equality. What can we do to support one another? What can we do to come together? These things that divide us, these things that we have to look at year after year, when we know the real reason why they are there, and we hide behind laws not to make changes. The government puts in laws last year in order to avoid changes, but we have to get away from that. We know that Dr. King and John Lewis and all of these people marched and fought because of some of these laws that were so unequal and not right. So now we'll say, well, we can't do this because of the law. Well, that's why we are here, to look at laws, and you have to do things in order to change those. So one thing we ask that our mayor and city council to do, take the lead in looking at these injustices and try to make a difference. So we thank you for what you are doing, and we look forward to making a great difference in Dublin and Lawrence County because we know that we are greater together. Thank you.
You've got miles and miles of grass to mow. So you're going to need a machine built to perform day in and day out, season after season. You're going to need a graver built to mow the distance.
Now at Myers Equipment and Supply in Dublin.
Hi, I'm Helen Powell. Been serving the middle Georgia area since 1985. If you would love an exciting career, please call me. Careers in Cosmetology, 129 North Franklin Street, 272-1967.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I'm an upcoming graduate from Careers in Cosmetology. It's been a wonderful experience, and I encourage you to contact Ms. Helen Powell for more opportunities.
Hello, I'm Chrissy at Careers in Cosmetology. I've recently enrolled here and I'm excited about the opportunities that lie ahead.
Hey, my name is Athena Jackson. I'm excited to be enrolled in Careers in Cosmetology. If you would like this opportunity, contact Careers in Cosmetology.
Hi, my name's Caitlin. I've been enrolled in Careers in Cosmetology for about four months now. I'm really enjoying it, and I think if this is the career for you, you should definitely come see Ms. Helen Powell.
Careers in Cosmetology, 129 North Franklin Street. Our number is 272-1967. Give me a call.
Anyone else would like to speak?
I'd like to speak. Your name is Anthony. My name is Thomas Leoy. I come on behalf of the removal of the Confederate statue. I also want to speak the names of the black girls that was killed not too long ago. We're celebrating, not celebrating, but acknowledging their deaths. On September 15, 1963, shortly after the March on Washington, Klansmen, who I believe support a lot of the ideas that we heard about, people that want to keep it, the lost cause, they bombed the 16th Street Baptist Church, and I'm going to say their names. Denise McNair, 11 years old. Carol Robinson, 14 years old. Idy Mae Collins, 14 years old. Cynthia Wesley, 14 years old, was murdered by these Klansmen in the safety of the lost cause to protect the heritage of some people who were speaking today. In particular, the Confederate flag. This was in 1963. They still acknowledge these children today, not here, in Birmingham, Alabama. But that was the first, pretty much the first blood lost by blacks based on racism to protect the heritage of some people, as they're saying today, and also intimidate other blacks who was be kept. So that's the purpose, really, of the statue. Because you got to know, he's not holding the Bible in his hand. And I know a lot of 50 people just say, hey, he's probably got one in his back pocket. But the intimidation really is what the statue is about. Now, we're kind of behind time because after the Race Relations Committee was kicking it around, I believe, I don't know why, there's been three statues removed right here in the state of Georgia. The good folks, they said, hey, look, we don't need this, especially downtown. Just a few days ago, they removed one down in St. Augustine. I didn't know there was one down in St. Augustine, Florida. And so we're behind time on that, but I believe as long as that statue stands there, the systemic racism that's going on and hiring at Morris State Bank, as the lady was saying...
You got one minute, Brad.
Thank you. And other places will continue to blossom. That's the whole point of the statue and the guy holding the gun. That's the point. Okay. Again, if he had a Bible, I might go along with you, but he's got a gun. The guy has got that. So I just want to say that it's really time, really, you know, some of you knew I came about that statue, I believe, 10, 15 years ago. Then it's got to go. Taxpayers are paying for it, blacks been paying for it. We couldn't even vote. And when they put the statue, black people couldn't even vote. So they put the statue there, and now it's still there, we still paying for it, and it's downtown where we've got millions of dollars we're spending saying that we want black people to come downtown because we have one of the best towns...
Mr. Leoy, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, my name is John Hall, and in listening to what the gentleman just said, I would of course disagree. Dublin has not only the Confederate monument, but a monument to Martin Luther King. And Dublin's unique. Other towns may have just a Confederate monument with nothing else. Dublin has something for everybody.
Mr. Hall, can I have a beer?
Okay. Wish I had a microphone, but that's okay. I really think Dublin is unique in that we have not only a Confederate monument, but we have a monument to Martin Luther King. I believe that Dublin has something for everybody, and if you take something away from one side, you're going to create animosity from that side. If you took down the Martin Luther King monument, you would have animosity from that side. So I think it's best, you know, it's great to have talks about race relations. I'm all for everybody getting along, and what's going on in this country really bothers me. I hate to see what my grandchildren are going to grow up in if this environment we have right now continues. But in my lifetime, I've seen things change and change and change and change. The Georgia flag was a big issue back in 1994. Well, the Georgia flag got changed, okay? If we keep going with changing every single thing that some people are offended by, we're going to end up with nothing. So I would say that, again, Dublin is unique. We have something for everybody, and we need to leave both of them alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Christopher Johnson. I'm a youth advocate in Dublin, and I've listened to all of the comments that was given here today, my take on the situation with respect to going forward in the future. That is something that I have dedicated my life in the city and invested in is the youth, is how, you know, with respect to race relations and moving forward in unity, we have to think about what our young people are going to inherit from these conversations. The conversations itself is divisive. I understand the history, the heart, you know, the pain, the misery, the triumph from our history has been, you know, good, bad, and ugly, but it's something that we've never moved on to reconcile. And so with respect to our children in the future, you know, we don't want to continue to have these conversations because it is not anything that's unifying us. There are things that are still dividing us. So there is a happy medium that the council have made recommendations for, where everyone's history will be preserved. I teach that history to my children as it was, the good, bad, and the ugly, but moving forward, you know, we try to elevate our intentions and hearts and minds above those things that we learned from our past. The monument is a symbol that will always be there to continue to have this conversation of the visitors. We can leave it there in museums, we can still talk about the history as it was then, but in our community, where we want to be together, all, everyone, we need symbolism that suggests unity. And so this monument, even though it is significant in history for some, but not for everyone in the community. In 1912, when that statue was voted on by the community for it to go up, African-American community was not part of that consensus. Martin Luther King Memorial was something that we all, we the people in this community, chose for it to be there. So we were united in that. And so, you know, going forward, we just have to consider the differences in the times, what these things are representing right now, and how they're going to represent into the future for my children, my grandchildren, and your children, that we all, you know, finally try to come together, you know, from being...
Mom, the sheep's on the iPad.
Did you look in the media room?
Oh, I found it.
Progressive Rule Telephone Co-op offers a full range of communication products and services to its members in Lawrence County and surrounding areas. We take pride in being your total communications provider, and we work hard to provide quality services at the best prices. In addition to offering phone service, we provide high-speed internet and digital high-def TV. And we always strive to put our members first. Progressive Rule, your total communications company. Small enough to know you, large enough to serve you. ProgressiveTel.com. Call four seven eight nine eight four forty-two oh one or stop by eight ninety Simpson Avenue in Rents. Progressive Rule Telephone Co-op. Anyone else that'd like to speak on any other subject of the month? If not, we will go to the council comments. Mr. Davis will start with you.
I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening, and I do want to thank the Race Relations Task Force for the difficult topics that you had to address, and I think you all did a wonderful job as far as presenting to us the feelings and the difficulty it came to making those decisions. So I want to thank you all very much for that, and I look forward to you all continuing to work on those race relation topics for the betterment of Dublin and Lawrence County. I want to thank also all of the speakers that came up for and against keeping and removing the statue and also Mr. Hattaw for coming up and expressing his feelings about the image of Dublin for one side of town and the other side of town. Those are things that we have to continue to work on. We want to do things that will be satisfactory to the entire community. Want to continue to thank Mr. Royce Hall and Ms. Tiffany Stanley for coming up and talking about census twenty-twenty. And as they told us, it's a lot of money that we are leaving on the table with us not completing the census. And I'm going to encourage everyone, we need to go through our contact list and all of our friends and the contacts on there, and just ask them, have they completed the census? And if not, if they would please do. And I do want to say that in the fall, when we vote for the President of the United States, I want everybody to do the same thing, to exercise your right to vote, because we need to have some morality here and reestablish that back in the United States. Because what's going on right now is immoral, and we need to put a stop to it.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for coming. Just echo Councilman Jerry Davis, the Race Relations Task Committee. We just want to thank you for your efforts. It's good to see everyone coming together for the greater good of the communities. I would like to thank Royce Hall and Ms. Tiffany as well for the census. As Jerry said, we need to encourage these others to reach out and network with other citizens, and we just want to give some of those laws to Lawrence County. Thank all the citizens who have spoken today, and thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you everybody for coming, and thank everyone that came up and took part to express their opinion about things. The Race Relations Committee, thank you very much, and very important. And remind everybody about the safety of the virus that's still here. It does seem to be getting better in the numbers I've been looking at, but it is still a threat to everyone else. So please take care and be safe.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Adams.
I got a loud mouth anyways. Thank you probably here with the dog, but I'll be able to take it off. I agree with what everyone said. Thank you for coming. I'd like to thank all the volunteers of the different committees the city has. I'd like to thank the police departments for providing security and all of the city employees for what they do day in and day out, they do this for the citizens. And once again, thank everyone for coming and voicing all your opinions on the different subjects tonight.
Mr. Carroll from here.
Well, all I'm going to say is it's been somebody good comment, and I agree with everything we said. So thank y'all for participating and be safe.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Benny Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank all everybody for coming out. Thank you for the presentation by Race Relations Task Force. Y'all doing a wonderful job addressing the issues and attacking the first, seeing that can be controversial issue. And you know, this is what it's about to take, to have a conversation like that in the north of the new fold. So I want to keep it clear, we got to keep having a little conversation. Don't feel free, step back. And I'll have to say, the only way, I'm going to know, I mean, people, I know how it feels when you have a conversation. Don't be afraid when that's a big on the task force on both sides. Don't feel, feel, feel free, feel free to voice it, because that's the only way we're going to get something out of it. I can't know how you feel or know how we need to talk, what we need to do to compromise, because I know exactly how you feel about it. Don't be afraid to do that. So that's the start of the conversation. I think that in city of Dublin, we are leading the way and be in a conversation that peaceful protest on both sides. We got all of the, all of the, a group to see, you know, the citizens around us and everything, whatever. So we've done a wonderful job. We've done a lot of, and I'm sorry, done a state of Dublin, but we've done a wonderful job. Police has done a, our police and sheriff and fake troops have done a wonderful job of keeping the peace and hard job they have done. So we, we, we there, but we're not quite there yet. We have some more conversations that we can be at. And I think that someone said, you know, he was councilman, he got to do what, he got to, I'm glad, I'm glad Hattaw hadn't talked about that other night, and he had a look at it. People feel bad. My side of town look like this, and for a while time, that side of town look like Dublin. City's made more attention this side and that side. You, and people seem to be able to think about it. So people think that mission we're doing out there, but I think they will come up with better conversations and have, and you know, this is what it is. Americans, you know, freedom of speech, no idea. And there were two issues, this is what the country found on, speak, freedom of speech. People have a choice and freedom that they have. So it's nice, you know, from being there, because this is, I understand, and they're fighting for the freedoms, so it's worth it to have a little freedom. So just keep having those conversations and not be afraid, agree to disagree, or even agree to compromise, it's something you got to think, don't be afraid of that, you got to have. You've been getting over the shell for so long, hearing for so long, it's found out you got to compromise. Hattaw, look around, see, you know, you showing a true representation of Dublin. The people too high, the people too down, it's important, they got a true representation of the city of Dublin. There's something people have on their side, I think they want to come out and continue having conversations in the new fold. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot's been said tonight. I give everything that everyone said to heart, we'll measure it, and certainly we'll talk about it. I want to echo what everyone else has said on the council. Thank you everybody for being here, and everybody be safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Powell.
Mr. Dan, what's it, Mr. Jones?
No, sir. Okay, that concludes the regular meeting for now. I'd like to ask, if I could, to get a motion of second and approval of a adjourned session to discuss the state.
Thank you.
Got a motion of second to discuss. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Most of the care. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.